Okay, I just noticed when you were mentioning for the House study that the Western Shana County, I don't know, it's Risham Tigerton Whitford. There are any?
Um, I just noticed when you were mentioning for the House study that the Western Shana County, I don't know, it's Risham Tigerton Whitford. There are any?
Second, ever? Yeah, public hearing is now closed. Let's call the meeting to order, please. And it here for silent. It all stand for the prejudiced? Uh, roll call, please.
Here.
Here. Okay, report of clerk for compliance with open meeting laws.
The agenda was posted in three public places and all it's sent to the.
Look for an approval of the agenda and or other matters authorized by law. For second, ever? Hold. All right, so now it looks like, uh, got a one and a half minute presentat- no, we have a presentation, uh, this, the City of Shano's 2020 audit. Control. That better? Okay. Uh, my name is Greg Patel. I'm the partner on the audit engagement from Herbert Rose. And you should have, uh, two reports available to you. And one is the bound copy for the larger PDF. And then the other one is the management communications letter. Uh, the management communications letter summarizes the audit results as well as has utility financial summary information at the end. And then we'll take a look at your governmental fund balance after that. So, on the first page of the management communications letter, it states that the objective audit is assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. If you have done that, you have a clean, unmodified audit. We accomplish this primarily through audit phases. One is interim audit, and we come out here in the December, um, area. And take a look at your internal controls, uh, provide any recommendations for bettering those controls and that if there are any control issues, the report to you. Consider that as well at that time and that, uh, there, how is, so there's one finding that's not new. It's the financial reporting finding. Uh, we'll get to that in a minute. So, um, the second phase then is to come out here at final, uh, audit work and then take a look at your trial balance and perform, uh, test of procedures to support balances in within financial cash or your property tax revenue. Moving on to page two then. Well, halfway down in italics, under qualitative aspects of accounting practices, it states that the city adopted no accounting policy during the year. And then indented after that second paragraph are the most significant accounting estimates contained within financial statements. Those really relate to your useful lives of your capital assets, the net pension asset and related deferred outflows. Uh, post-employment liability and the deferred outflows and inflows and the estimate of the closure and post-closure care for the. At the top of page three, uh, then the next set of indentations indicates the most significant or, um, sensitive, uh, note disclosures contained within the financial statement. Those really relate to the disclosure of, um, uninsured and uncollateralized cash deposits, the net pension asset, and then post. Moving down, uh, the next section states that we encountered no difficulties forming the audit. Um, all adjust, all material adjusting entries that we proposed are reflected with financial statements. And that we had no disagreement. Now, at the end of the audit, then we prepare a draft of the financial statements, hand it back to Greg and his team. They review it, adjust any changes that are needed, and accept responsibility for the content of financial statements. On page four, then starts to talk to about, um, internal control over financial reporting. That results in a material weakness. There's two thresholds, uh, within these findings, a significant efficiency or a material weakness. Material weakness is the higher of the two. And then you see underlying there at the very bottom, financial report. So, again, this is not a new, uh, finding from prior years. It's a repeat finding, basically states that financial. Set of, and you know, just from an understanding of what it takes to prepare these financial statements, uh, they're over 70 pages long. And since I entered the profession in 2005, we went from Gatsby statements, uh, 43 and 45, all the way through 100. So, the, the breadth and change within governmental auditing accounting standard has really changed significantly. The training and the, the cost benefit to having Greg prepare these in the framework, probably offset by the time benefits. Page five, then we talk about a prior year observation. Uh, we suggested that you document your significant operational accounting policies. And the status at the very bottom there, um, it looks like you're in the final steps of approving. Very positive that. Follow up on. Page six, write some summary financial information regarding water, water utilities in terms of rate of return. And really what that is, is, um, a measure of your net income for the year versus plant interest. And so the very left column then is the 2020 waters performance, uh, rate of return of 6% versus point nine, um, thousand nineteen. And then the waste water, 2.86 2020 versus point one eight and so increase in positive performance on both of these sides. Um, from the PSC side on the water, the benchmark rate of return right now is four point. Uh, virtually none of my water utilities are, you know, achieving that benchmark rate of return. So that just means that if you were to go in for a full rate case, that's really the benchmark that they try to achieve setting rates. But it's also kind of the cost of service of what they figured to cover both your operational costs and. So, the water utility performed above that. Questions so far? Okay, in the larger financial report, then I'm going to turn to page nine and 10. In governmental accounting, uh, you have funds, and I look at them as really buckets of activities, have resources coming into those buckets as well as sources being used with buckets and again, end up with fund balance. So, on page nine, the furthest left, um, fund is your general fund, which takes care of most of your operational activities. And then you have your debt service fund, which pays debt service, uh, Ted number four, which, uh, about reflects, um, capital project activity, well for activity, uh, certain boundary. Your general capital projects fund and what we have accumulated all of your. General fund typically draws the most interest in what the fund balance. So if we go back to that far left column, all the way down the page, changes in fund balance. General fund in hundred thousand, up at two. Um, another way to look at fund balance, if I have $10,000 of cash, but a thousand dollars, I rarely have $9,000. So it's the different components of fund balance and back a couple pages, six and seven. Are presented on those pages. Again, the general fund is at the far left, look down quarters of the way down at fund balance. The different categories of fund balance, you have non-spendable fund balance of a thousand in general fund. Unassigned fund balance is really the key measure. What does that mean? Uh, that $2.3 million of unassigned fund balance at the percentage. From a bond rating standpoint, they consider anything from 20 to 30 percent strong, anything above 30. Positive results. In addition to bond rating analysis, other. In addition to bond rating analysis, other benefits for fund balance. Higher like offset the cash. Some of your major. So you collect tax revenue in November and your headlock. Like the remaining taxes in August. And then your final shared revenue payment from the state happening. But you're operating all, all the time while you're missing some of your significant budgeted revenues. So period in the 30, around the 30% general fund unassigned fund balance, how do you ride the waves of that, I would take any questions that you might. Went a little bit off. Got any questions? Sorry, I don't have. I believe that those that were the pension and oh, if you go back to cities. Yeah, yeah. Yep, that's, that's really nothing imperative to understanding. The landfill is part of the city's information pension that aggregate. Haven't got built up.
I'll answer the second part of your question. We've taken a lot of steps over the last four or five years to alter and catch up and revise rates so that when we do close, we have enough sufficient capital for the cap as well as our long term. Like we've done, made those adjustments and now we're back on schedule.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. Unless, unless more questions may be. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for having me.
All right, so we'll move on to the presentation of the downtown plaza with all the current developments. I believe we've got Brandon and Blake.
Yes, we have Brandon and Blake tonight to give kind of a status report. And a discussion, they're going to touch on a few things related to, you know, progress for the demolition. Schedule, you know, where they are as far as putting some numbers together, talking a little bit of budget. So I guess I will go ahead and, and turn it over to Brandon at this point. You hear us, Brandon?
Yeah.
You're, you're good, there's, there's no questions, just, just sad brownie faces because the buildings aren't down yet.
So if you got four bidders, you know, you, we don't want to be right tight to that low bidder, you know, we're trying to kind of give you a reasonable estimate of, of, of where the, the, the range of bids could come in. So there's a number of things that have been identified in the past as potential alternate bids. The first one that I'll talk about, well, let me pause and see if anybody has any questions before I talk to you on here.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. The first one that has been talked about for a while is an alternate bid that could trim some costs would be the parking along Washington Street, and I'm going to switch to some of the vignettes that were done here, hopefully you guys can see that. So you know, these, these vignettes are quite accurate compared to the design, but not, not exactly what we're kind of working with at this point. But the alternate bid one that's been talked about potentially getting cut would be this parking here. We're estimating that might trim about $65,000. Let's see, alternate two, I added my email up here. We had these shade structures and Blake, please chime in if you got anything to add on any of this, I'm not asking you to, but let me see if I can get a better view of these shade structures for everybody here.
Are you talking about the swings?
Yeah, right, thank you, Blake. So these guys here, we had two of those on the west node and we're currently estimating those to be $80,000 each, which is surprising. Steel prices are very high right now. And these curve linear features, I'm told Blake isn't doing most of the investigation on these. Are, you know, an expensive form to create with steel.
Yeah, the, the rolled steel form that gives it that organic curvature is, is quite expensive. The other thing that's driving the cost on these, quite honestly, is the huge cantilever that we're showing. So the footing on these structures is quite large. So I'm actually in redesign right now to put a second support member about midway out on the structure that reduces the cantilever motion quite a bit. And I think that's going to bring down the cost quite a bit. So we're, we're working through some strategies.
Yeah. And so not only like strategies to reduce the cost of these, but also these have been talked about as a potential alternate bid, you know, so if we're at 160 now, I don't know where we might get to with cost savings due to the lack of, or less cantilever. But you know, that would potentially be say 100 to 160,000. We are also showing quite a few seat walls around the, the project that, you know, the, the discussion had been to try to create as much kind of informal seating as possible. So you know, we have a seat wall around this bed, this bed, this bed. There's some more on, on this side, a few of them over here. You know, the main focus that I had to potentially cut some costs was, you know, say you were to make this not a seat wall, but maybe more of just a concrete edge on a plant or, or slight curb. We'd be able to probably trim some costs there. Based off our current cost estimate, if, if we kind of cut the, the linear footage of these seat walls in half, we could trim another 50,000. We're also working on, or Blake is trimming some costs on this cantilevered wave structure in the neck that also came back surprisingly high, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that at all, Blake?
Yeah, I mean, again, the steel, I don't know if anyone has followed the steel market, but it is exponentially increased here over the last few months. And it's not really showing any signs of recovery in the near future. So we're looking at ways to reduce the amount of posts. And so I'm working with two manufacturers to try and troubleshoot that. And again, the, the footings on this structure are immense, you know, it's essentially 140 feet of eight foot wide buried footing to support the cantilever motion. So I'm looking at potentially putting in some support members on the opposite side to try and alleviate that.
Yeah, and so.
Brandon, just I want to touch on the seat wall discussion a little bit. We're, we're looking at matching the materials that we did in Franklin Park with the stone veneer. You know, maybe we want to look at a different application, because that's a very expensive treatment on seat walls. So we can look at different materials. But the other thing, Brandon, you and I haven't talked about this yet, but I was thinking today, on the east block, on the, if the north parcel becomes available, we could probably eliminate a long stretch of that wall. Which would be great for cost savings.
Yeah. So going back to this next structure, in, in our estimate on this West Plaza, we had $284,000 for that structure, which is again, very surprising, mostly due to the steel cost. So you know, as a, as a placeholder and due to some of the work Blake's doing to try to trim that down, you know, if you took $80,000 off of that cost, that's kind of a placeholder of, you know, where we potentially could get, get to. You know, I'm just creating a ledger here for people of things that we might be able to trim. If we did all the things I just mentioned, you know, that would trim off about $300,000. I'm also, you know, showing in the available funding here, you know, a charge from SMU for undergrounding the electric and the overhead lines there of about $100,000 that Eddie, you know, chime in if I'm misspeaking here, but my understanding was that had not been kind of set in stone yet. So if, if there's any way that that can go down, that would help us out as well.
You're right, that is not set in stone yet.
Okay. So you know, there's some potential savings there as well. So I'm not saying it's going to happen, but if all of that $100,000 went away, then you know, real quick, you're at $400,000. And then there's also some that we've been talking about, I'll go back to the vignette here. About placing a brick facade on the side of the Stubborn Brothers building, because as you can see, it's such a prominent feature for the plaza space and right now it's just concrete block. And the demolition project was bid that way so that some bricks would be saved for that specific purpose. But we're currently hearing that CDBG may not be able to cover that. I think we're still in discussion, and I know Art's in the room there, but I think we're still in discussion about whether that's covered or not. But if we want to do that and CDBG will not cover it, that would be another, right now we're estimating $33,000 that would have to be covered from somewhere else. So that would come off of our you know, ledger of the project cost estimate versus the available funding. So you're talking getting in the neighborhood of 450 to 500,000 dollars of potential savings if we make some of these changes and potentially not award some alternate bids. Which would bring the project cost down closer to 1.3 million compared to the 1.2, I'm just using rough numbers, 1.2 million dollars of available funding. So you know, I guess, um, you know, I'm still hopeful, borderline confident that we'll, you know, be able to bring this back in line. Although, you know, I have listed some of the features that, you know, I know that we, we want, such as the Washington Street parking and these cantilevered hanging benches that would be a little sad if they went away, but those are things that could always be put in in the future as well. So I guess I'll pause again and see if anybody's comments or questions.
On the cantilevers, the metal structures, have you ever looked at possibly using like a high grade plastic instead of metal?
The structural pieces are going to have to be metal. We are looking at the canopies. We looked at using wood. We have not gone down the composite lumber route. We certainly can. Yeah, I'm trying to balance the, the long-term maintenance versus the cost. So that, you know, that is going to be a trade-off. Yeah, we can certainly look at it.
I'm just thinking, you know, like a UHMW or HDP, something that could be painted that's, you know, going to last as long as metal. It's going to be, I have to think, half or quarter of the price that metal's been a cost.
Well, this, again, the structural numbers have to be metal. There's no way that the poly will support that kind of road. It's possible that the cross members and the roll we might be able to do in the poly. So yeah, we can, we can investigate that.
And one thing I just want to add is, you know, some of these alternates, these were kind of the discussions that came out of, you know, the Plaza focus group on, you know, what, what would we be able to cut that would still give us the plaza space? You know, so the Washington Street parking, you know, if that doesn't happen, you still have the plaza. You know, if these cantilevered benches don't happen, you still have the plaza. They're just unfortunate, you know, nice neat features that wouldn't be there, but you still have, you know, the, the space and is created. You know, there's, there's some other features we could potentially look at cutting to Blake, like these Corten steel panels that you can kind of see hiding behind the bushes there. You know, there's a few things like that, that, you know, you still get the plaza space, but it, it wouldn't necessarily be as nice. However, I'm saying all this because, you know, if people are, you know, say, we have to have those swinging benches, you know, council. You know, we could look at trimming costs elsewhere.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I would not encourage anyone to get the knife out quite yet. And we're still working with fabricators on finding alternate solutions. So this is more intended to give you an update as to our progress and where we're seeing some challenges.
Yeah. I also.
Hey, Brandon, just hold on. Brandon, just hold on. There's a question quick.
Sure.
You mean like the cover itself being just like a platter? Yeah. I think the thought behind that structure was it's so visible from the road that it itself serves multiple purposes. One, it, it's your pinch point in your most, because you got two parking lots on either side. So you have to delineate where a walking path is. And then also it, it's built and designed this way so that the people are protected from car traffic. But then also again, because it's so visible, it being almost like an art piece, that was the thought behind it. Now, as we're kind of finding, you know, some of these costs are, you know, astronomical and talking with Blake. You know, there's a lot of creative thought going into what these guys are doing right now and trying to find some ways to trim back. So I just kind of echo what Blake said, you know, there's, there's still so much in the work, in the works on this of some modifications that we may be able to make where it might just be different materials, but being able to be the same kind of structure. Or, you know, there's still other grants we're working on right now, other funding sources. People have kind of been, there's some people who might be interested in, in giving some money towards this. You may have an opportunity to, you know, when we come back and if it's absolutely everything you want and, and we may have to look at the dollars or CIP savings or some other things like that. So we'll have a lot of time to kind of get to that point. But I guess, I guess that is a good question. I mean, we felt and that Plaza group felt that that piece was really important to have, to be kind of the wow factor. If that's not the case, then there may be some other ways that like you, like you mentioned, maybe trim it back or something like that.
One of the things about that feature is that it's lit. You know, we wanted it to be safe. We wanted it to be. Through a lot of the discussions and a lot of the planning, we talked about how we wanted that lights. Yeah, and when you walk at night, it'd be a showstop. And maybe change the material if it happens, but I did want to call out that that would be lit.
Yeah, that absolutely, that whole corridor is envisioned to be lit at night. And just to throw this out there, one of the things that I'm looking at doing is, you know, taking that rolled steel that gives it that, that free flow motion and essentially making it a series of angled tangents at very low angles. So it's still going to have the appearance of a motion, but you take out the whole element of having to bring in steel benders to get that rolled motion. And the fabricators are all telling me that's an exponential cost savings. So I'm actually modeling that up to see how it's going to look, if it will still maintain our design intent and yield those savings that we're hoping for.
So using composite materials and molded, would this be, this should be a big savings to what you're doing.
Yeah, again, I can't commit to the, using those synthetic materials. I, we really need to look at the structural capacity though. But I'd like the idea. We'll certainly keep investigating.
Looks exciting. Moving along. Brandon, do you have, I think, well, are you guys, do you have any other questions, I guess, of them on this? So was there anything else you guys wanted to cover this evening, or was that pretty much what you had for us tonight?
Um, well, Eddie, I guess I did have one other subject that I just wanted to maybe get council thinking about or get some conversation going. I'll bring this over here. So for the Main Street bump out area, let me minimize this real quick. So these, these bump outs here. You know, initially we were hopeful that we'd maybe be able to find some way to do like an inside out construction or one side and then the other to allow traffic to continue to flow north and south on Main Street there to construct these. And as we started, you know, putting the design together and actually dimensioning travel lanes out and tapers in and out of the, the construction zone and things like that. It, it's just really not going to work to have traffic flow through here while you're constructing these curb lines and the pavement between it. And what's not shown here is, you know, a concrete crosswalk to kind of continue that, that blue across there, which is where, where we've been going. That can always change still. So what I personally would recommend is that we, we shut down Main Street for a period of time just to get this done as quick as possible. I think it would take two to three weeks to, to shut down Main Street, build these curb lines and everything in between them. The concrete, repave the asphalt, do any subsurface utility connections that we might need to do in Main Street. And then reopen Main Street to traffic between the new curb lines. And then the contractor can work behind those curb lines going forward. I really think that'll give us, you know, contractors hate having to work, you know, under tight traffic control conditions, you know, barrier wall or other. And I, and then that, that costs money to set up detours or do any temporary pavement or anything like that. So that's what I would recommend. I guess I'll pause there to see if people had any comments on that. I was going to go next towards, you know, if that's, if that's acceptable towards what we might have as a detour route, but I'll stop there and see what people are having to say.
Hey, show us what you're thinking on as a detour.
Okay.
I guess my comment is also that at least looking at the businesses where the bump outs are, everyone who would have a backdoor access. So there wouldn't be any businesses, I would be concerned about those businesses losing access to being open. But I don't think, I think everyone that's shown there would have a backdoor access. That we wouldn't jeopardize their business.
Right. And that's a great point. I mean, the construction zone that would be closed on Main Street would essentially be what you're seeing in the rendering here, you know, maybe a little bit farther north and south. But it, you would have local access, you know, right up to that construction zone essentially.
What's your route?
Go ahead. Sorry about that.
I was just saying, what is your recommendation? Let's take a look at it.
Um, so the first one I'll show here, and I hope you guys can see this. You know, this is what would be considered like an official state detour route. You know, if you're going north and south on 22, they would always try to keep you on state highways. So you would route onto 29 to go over to 55, back down to 29 and, and whatnot, not 29, what is that? Green Bay Street, you would go on Green Bay Street over to 55 and then down to 29 to get around that, you know, one block construction zone. You know, what I initially thought, more, you know, more friendly to businesses, keep the traffic going into Shawno, was to do more of a local detour. And I believe you'd be able to do this, you know, from like a WISDOT regulation perspective because 22 is a connecting highway, which means that the city has local jurisdiction over it. And it's a, it's a local project. So, you know, it's kind of like your call on how you want to reroute the, the traffic. So typically, you know, people are hesitant to reroute a state highway with the associated truck traffic and higher volumes onto local roadways just due to, you know, pavement deterioration issues. Normally that reroute is for much longer than two to three weeks though. So, you know, these are a couple of options that, you know, could be done. You know, there's obviously many options of, you know, taking them on a much shorter detour, but still through the city on city streets. This would just be kind of like the maybe shortest route around the construction zone. You know, you, you would be talking about sending everybody on 22, including the trucks on these streets. But it would allow traffic to continue, you know, into and out of Shawno, you know, more so through the downtown. I guess I'll stop again and see what people's thoughts are.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, they're just trying to get a feel for it.
Yeah. And we don't have to make, you know, I'm not asking for any decisions. I just am bringing out this up as a, you know, fairly significant discussion topic.
I think the big question is if you're okay with local detours, potentially having heavier traffic loads on these residential streets for a period of two to three weeks. And if you are, then we'll find the most appropriate route possible to reroute traffic. Otherwise, like Brandon said, really the only other alternative is routing them around town. And I don't think that's, no one's going to do it anyway, first of all.
Be looking to do, would this part of the project be looking to happen this fall or would that be next summer?
So we, we did talk about that. Very slim chance it could happen this fall, but probably unlikely. It's probably a spring, it's probably spring. Because it would be like the first thing they do. To then work behind the crap, to work behind the curb lines.
The closure on Lake Drive next summer. And it closing down Main Street and drive both through straight access from 29 to get up from it. We'll probably have to look closely at when it.
We definitely want to coordinate that. Again, our, luckily ours is a very short window. So hopefully we could do it before they do that.
What tree was that that's getting closed? Lake Drive, I thought I heard?
Yeah, Lake Drive over by the airport. They're replacing the bridge over the channel.
Oh, yeah.
That's your straight shot from 29 to over by the lake. It basically detoured from 29 to Main Street.
Yeah.
So Brandon, it sounds like if we can coordinate and figure out that, you know, that, look at that airport drive project and see what their proposed plan is, I don't see a lot of objection otherwise, as long as, you know, we're just taking those things into account.
Sure. And, you know, you could also do, and again, I'm not asking for any decisions. And Eddie will keep exploring with DPW and stuff like that, which way we think is the most appropriate. But you could also potentially split traffic to, you know, have a southbound detour and a northbound detour, you know, something like that, to not have everybody go on the same three roadways.
Well, I thought too on splitting traffic, is it, is it possible to have a separate truck route set up so that we don't have those big semis going down Washington or Franklin Street trying to maneuver around those city blocks? Have a separate alternate route for the trucks?
Yes, that's absolutely possible. The one thing that I'd say with that is, you know, we can put up a truck route, detour, try to grab them, send them down Green Bay Street over to 55 and back to 29. I'm not confident that truck drivers would pay attention to that a ton. I mean, hopefully some, you know, would, but I still think you're going to see semis following the, the main detour, if you will. You know, even when you post a really strong, everybody go this way, kind of out and around town detour. Half the time you still get the semis trying to go through town, so. We can certainly do that. It would, it would help, even if you got 20, 30, 40% of trucks, 50% of trucks off those local streets, everything would help.
All right, Brandon, I think, I think they're saying, let's proceed with a plan for that.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Anything else this evening for Brandon and Blake while we got them?
I think that's it. There's a, there's a Bucks game in 15 minutes, I think, so better wrap it up.
Ball 20 up. Yeah, well, let's just move through a couple of things. If that's all you've got, we'll, we're going to move on. Thanks for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon and Blake. See you guys.
Okay, so I'm going to go through a couple of things and then we'll see if we can get somebody. Anything for the business forum? Anything for citizen recognition? Is there a possi, could I get a motion to have a motion to de，并 if necessary, all in favor? John wants us to move to a couple of situations that are, the public is here for before.
But do you want to bring item 20?
Well, but I also want to do sound off because talk about something we're talking about on the consent agenda. Issue, is that possible we can get, or should we? So then I'll look for a motion. A motion of second for 20 and 14? Any discussion, all in favor? So we're going to deviate over to 14 for public input. Leave that, that's time for you to. This is going to be part of our consent agenda later.
That would be like tuning. Uh, well, Mia invited me to talk to you about an organization in Shawno County called the Shawno Fairness Coalition. And I want to tell you about what we have. A little bit about us, we believe for fairness in government. There are many popular that aren't being included by the legislature. And one of them includes fair wages. Too many people have a hard time. They need to have more than a job or travel outside the county. Find employment. And, uh, on the county board, uh, test or I know, I mean, you've. Of things about frustrated, vocal about, about low wages. On the employees. Some turn down employment and on for higher wages. The idea of having to plan to raise seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Popular support. And polls, uh, no one, you know, you had the, no one could live on fifteen thousand dollars. And, uh, living wage according, there is something called a living wage calculator. And now the one for Shawno County says that a person that's single, no children, could be earning thirty dollars and seventy cents. Have a. Uh, if there are no children, uh, they need to, if there's, there are children, uh, it would cook as much dollars an hour to, uh, this is just information that we want people to share out. Uh, we're, we're about educating. So, um, the, the state budget just. And to raise the minimum wage. And that which has been since, uh, thousand nine. Um, governor wanted to raise to eight dollars and forty cents. Form a committee for the possibility. Um, but, um. But this is not the only issue that's frustrating. Want to see progress in. Local government guys are also affected by the lack of revenue coming to state. The partisan drawing of district maps allowed legislators to ignore the will of the people. Um, this is why we believe there needs to be fairness in. Assembly and state. Very manning has made. For progress to in other areas, which is funny for public education. Uh, this past weekend, uh, we had a Shawno fest, you may, uh, where people signed some of our. Um, this, what they really wanted me to tell you was that, uh, it's Saturday, uh, we're having a march. In park at one o'clock, uh, and, uh, marching on the sidewalk down to the. Where we're going to have a rally and the speech. So everyone. Uh, so wanted you to know what's going on in the city. Um, the idea of fairness should be. And government officials should do what's best. Yeah.
For that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll, uh, move to number twenty, uh, what, uh, what we're gonna be discussing tonight. Gonna turn it over to Kevin Barco, who is. Commissioner for the city on the airport. We also have tonight with us Doug Engel and John Seidel, which are the secretary and the chairman of the commission, which, uh, we're looking for, I handed out a, uh, flyer, what's gonna be going on August twenty-first. We're gonna have the grand reopening and runway rededication as they completed the runway refresh and, uh, some of them actuate. So, uh, turn it over, uh, to hear about what they're asking for in this donation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, I am on the mission, um, have been to three. And, uh, tough to get caught up really. I, I got on right in the tail end of the runway project and, um, things, things went very well for the runway project. There was one little glitch that had with the small section that we had to redo, but that's been taken care of. And it looks like to me a plane coming in and everything looks like it's ready to go. So, um, you know, there's gonna be an open house, as the mayor mentioned. This is at the opportunity. Hundreds. They'll be attending this. I mean, there's gonna be, we've got a flyer here, aviation display, car show, we've got a learn to fly thing. We're gonna start. High for a half hour. You can take flying lesson. All with a high program, a Young Eagles program, so they can take an airplane ride, eight to seventeen year old kids can take an airplane ride. And, yeah, event's gonna be Saturday, August twenty-first, ninety-two PM. And the airport commission is asking for support on this. Would really like for you to come down there and, you know, be present for the festivities, help out wherever. And there to. Say to shake hands and just. Let people know who you are and what Shawno's all about, because this has the potential to be something really. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Engel.
You Doug? Thanks for, uh, the lights on. Does that mean it's working? Green?
Green.
Green. Yeah, thanks, everyone. Uh, as most of you know, we just finished a two-point-three million dollar runway renovation project. And that comes on the heels of an eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar building project to build a new terminal. And we're in the process of undertaking a four-hundred-thousand-dollar strategic planning and master plan redraw for the airport, where we'll be able to vet everything that we have on our long-term plan, kind of parse it down into what's fundable and what isn't, which will ultimately affect, uh, you and the, and the county as well, in terms of how we look for additional infrastructure money going forward. The magic in all this is we did this with very little local money. In fact, we will have spent, uh, over three million dollars, uh, using less than fifty thousand dollars worth of local money. And how is that possible? Well, it's possible when you use federal and state grants, uh, that give us tremendous leverage, as much as five percent, uh, to, to get these projects done. But we've had a vision for quite some time about how are we going to get more traffic in the airport? How are we going to get more activity? How do we get Shawno on the map? How do we make it a destination for people that fly in? Uh, I spent some time flying this weekend. I flew over a small airport in northern Wisconsin. There were three jets parked there, four hangars and three jets. Um, a lot of people, uh, are willing to come to this community if they've got a good destination, if they've got hangar space, got a decent runway to use. But it all starts with getting the flying community acclimated to using Shawno as a place. And we do get quite a bit of traffic. Uh, most people don't realize that in a normal year, we have anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand actions at the airport. Most people don't think that there's anywhere near that much that goes on there. We've got a regular crowd that flies in from throughout the state, uh, for lunches that walk to the local restaurants and other establishments to, uh, have breakfast, lunch or, or dinner. But, uh, that said, what we're trying to do is get Shawno back on the map for the flying community, the folks that aren't familiar with, the folks that didn't want to come here because the runway had speed bumps in it, literally. I mean, we, we had a very rough runway. And that's now fixed. It's gorgeous. So we thought the best way to get that started, get that whole action jump started is to have a grand reopening event. And doing it with a car show, doing it with some static displays, having the EAA Young Eagles program, uh, which is basically an EAA sponsored, insurance provided, uh, opportunity for eight to eighteen, eight through seventeen year olds to, to fly. Um, uh, as a young eagle, they get a patch, they get a magazine, they get an honorary membership at the EAA. Uh, it's actually pretty nice, it's quite attractive. But we've also arranged now to begin giving flight instruction at the airport again. We've not had that for a number of years. Um, DeClarence no longer provides that, it's part of his services. And so we've got that started. We're gonna have introductory flights, uh, introductory, uh, discovery flights, as they're called, will be available. But with all the goings on that we're going to have there, it's reasonable that on a good weather day, we could have a hundred airplanes fly in, uh, just for this event, in addition to the ones that we can have on static display. We've got commitments from a lot of people to come in already and do that. We're gonna have a couple of food trucks out there for food and beverage. With the car show, the static displays, the Young Eagles flights and everything, there'll be a lot of activity on that day. We anticipate we'll have at least a thousand spectators at this event. And we think that, uh, if on a good weather day, if everything goes well, we might have three thousand there. So this is a big event. Uh, it's important to Shawno. It's important to the city and the county to do this. Uh, it really starts to pave the way for increased use of the airport, making it known in the flying community. And we should all be very proud of, uh, how we've used funding to get things done at the airport and make it a very, very nice facility. So with that, what we're hoping, uh, our budget is, as you know, fairly meager from an operations standpoint. We're looking for support for a thousand dollars, uh, to add to our, uh, funding for this, uh, for this project. So I'm here to ask for that, tell you what we're doing and answer any questions that you might have.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion of second. Um, any discussion? I, I do want to add a couple of things, just to make sure we're real clear. We're talking about this Young Eagle event, gonna be five or six pilots and planes and maybe something even more special than a plane that can talk about right now that will be flying these kids. It's at no charge. But we get to get all this at free.
The pilots are not donating planes and fuel to do.
I just wanted to make that. So, um, any discussion? Oh, that's the learn to fly. That's just for the. Yeah, this, so this fly, yeah. I, I, this is kind of a not-for-public, public flyer that we're just finalizing, but I thought it was important that they shared it with all. You could see the value to the community.
I just want, I just want to comment, I just think this is really great. Um, kudos to all the work that's been done out at the airport. And, um, I think it's a wonderful asset to our community. Um, probably one that a lot of people aren't even aware of. So, um, two things that I would like clarification on. Um, one, how many planes you said you were hoping to have, maybe a hundred planes come? How, how many can be here at one time? I mean, like, what's the parking?
Well, we, we've got, yeah.
I can't even imagine that a hundred could fit.
We really haven't worked out the layout yet, but we've got a lot of space out there. And it really depends on, uh, in a dry year like we have, where we can mow a lot of what would normally be, normally I say, because of the typical year, it's wetter than it is right now.
Sure.
Um, we've got a lot of places that we can park airplanes. Yeah.
Okay. And we can handle that kind of traffic of that many flights coming in and out.
We, we can handle that kind of volume without any problem. But, but the car parking may be even more of a challenge than the airplane parking. But we, we can park planes on the old grass runway and divide the grass, north, east, west grass runway in half and have car parking on part of it and planes on the other. So, uh, they won't be using it to land or take off, but they can pull in and park. So there's ways to do that.
Great. So that my other, um, question is, um, how, how does a young person aged eight to seventeen become part of a EA Young Eagles? How is that promoted? Is that something that we can also help promote, like maybe through the park and rec, like to sign up as a, a recreation? You know, like we have surfing lessons or we have, or sailing lessons, whatever. Could that be something that we help also promote?
Yes.
Or is it something that they have to do like through the EA?
No. Yeah, the EAA Young Eagles program is basically a program to get kids interested in aviation and give them a pathway to an introduction to it. Um, they get a little bit of instruction on the ground as to what it's all about, how an airplane flies, a few real basic things like that. Then they get a short ride. The magic of this is it's done with volunteers, EAA volunteers, provide the airplanes and the fuel to take kids up and provide this basic instruction. And in return, the EAA provides a million dollars worth of liability insurance per child for, for the event. Uh, the way to sign up for it, um, there's, there's really three requirements. One is eight to seventeen. Can't be outside of that range. Second is that a parent has to be present, not in the airplane, but at the event. Parent has to be present. The third is that you have to fill out a form, uh, that has to be signed by a parent. So you can't fill up the family truckster with the neighborhood and bring them all. Uh, parents have to be present for it and forms need to be filled out. And what we're going to do on our airport website is provide a link to the EAA Young Eagles website that'll enable you to print out the form, read all the instructions and print out the form and have a parent sign it. Uh, we'll have forms available at the airport the day of the event, so you can do it there too, but we're gonna encourage people to do it with the link.
I think what we should do is. John, I think you could get these forms through us or Park and Rec.
Yes.
Think it's where, I think that's where you're going.
Yeah, you can, you can go out to the website and you can, you can get the instructional page and the, and the form right off the EAA website. But we'll have a link on the shawnoairport.com website.
People are gonna read that and think like, oh, well, I, that's beyond me. I, I can't, I'm not part of the EAA. I've never gone to it. I think most parents are gonna, are gonna read right past that and not understand that, hey, I could bring my son or daughter down. And it's very easy. I can get a form right in Shawno.
Yep.
That sometimes it becomes, when they see something like the EAA or something like that, that they don't understand. To me, that's a barrier.
Yeah, I think your idea is a good one.
Yeah, it's a great idea, cause you don't have to be, it's just provided through the book. So we'll work on that.
We'll have some at the airport. We'll, we'll have some forms available.
Yeah, but we'll also get them available. Thank you. Excellent. All right. So, oh, go ahead, Brad.
I, I would like to say that I think this is a great event, I think. Community, the only question I have is just in general, what are a thousand dollars of? For all operational costs or purchasing a pilot?
Good question. We're gonna have a number of fixed costs in connection with this event. We're gonna have to have some tents. We're gonna have to have, uh, we've, we've already spent some money for advertising. We're gonna be, this is gonna be, um, yeah, through WTCH and their affiliated stations, uh, which is going to draw some, we want to get as big a footprint out there as we can, because, uh, from a pilot standpoint, uh, anything within a hundred and fifty miles is fair game for this, uh, cause that's less than an hour's flight for a lot of airplanes. So, um, there's getting it out via the radio. We're working with, uh, new media on some print media that we're going to be distributing. It's gonna be in the paper. Uh, we're working with, uh, one of the TV stations. Uh, so there's a lot of media activity. Some of that is with costs, some of it's been, um, discounted, some of it's been donated. So it's a, it's a combination of all those things. Um, we just, we're still working out some detail with the, uh, food trucks, uh, as to whether we're gonna have to have a minimum in the event of a rain day or some such thing like that. Um, we've got, um, those of you that have been to the fly outs that were discontinued a number of years ago. Um, if you remember the guy on the microphone, Larry Scurbert, uh, who could tell you what was flying in, if it was a nineteen forty-seven Model C and what the propeller was and what the horsepower was and when they last made them. And, uh, Larry is going to come back, uh, and be the moderator for the, for this event as well. So there's some costs in all these things and, and, um, uh, we're still working on the whole budget, but we are gonna incur some costs to do this. It'll be a, pretty much a fixed cost. So that's what it will go, it will go specifically for the budget for this project.
For the promotion.
For the promotion of this project.
What do you do if there's a rain date? Or do you have a rain date?
We do have a rain date. Uh, we're gonna use, uh, Sunday, the twenty-second as a rain date. We hope we don't need to do that. But for fly-ins, typically it's done that way. Good. Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thanks for coming. Um, so we have a motion in a second. Uh, I guess this is. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. So, um, that's the only deviation that we had. So we're gonna go back on track here. And we're gonna start with some department reports and whoever wants to jump up first and move on the meeting.
Aaron Council, uh, I'll get my thirty-five minute video and PowerPoint presentation queued up, Leslie. Thank you. All right. While she's working on that, I talk about the other thing. I, uh, have been working in Park and Rec for about twenty years now, which I know makes me sound old. And, uh, I just recently learned that July is Parks and Recreation Month. I was very disappointed by, because I felt like it should be the whole year, right? So anyhow. Exactly. I need a thousand bucks. Uh, okay. I'm gonna keep the rest of it brief. Um, all I can say is there is a ton of activity going on in parks and recreation in our, in our community. And I really feel as if, um, it's the dividends being paid of the investment in structure over the last big referendum projects, but even the minor upgrades. I mean, I honestly, uh, in talking with our staff, we have never experienced a summer busy as we are right now. That's a great. That's a great. I could share lots of very specific, I could share lots of specific numbers with you, if you're interested, I'd be happy to do that. I won't do that right now. A couple of highlights though, do I do want to mention, our Thursdays is going strong. I, I wasn't telling myself, but I heard that Johnny Wa, the Port of July was probably one of the biggest draws at Thursdays of 2018, so hopefully that kind of becomes the new form that we're working towards. We just came out of a bidding meeting with Shawno, with, yeah, we just came out of a bidding meeting, for Shawno Fest, and they were talking about how that was one of the best things to put on as well. Part of that. Things you maybe didn't realize is we have Little League tournaments going on at Memorial Park and Martske Park, those tournaments are even bigger than they have been in the past. There are football tournaments going, you know, even structures that have common, that's awesome. Two last things, we both, so it's not only about quantity, ways we measure recreation is yes, you can look at participant totals, we can also look at smaller classes and that impact was very meaningful, that one person, them, that one. Not only about size of number, it's about quality of impact. Two new classes this year that went over tremendously well, windsurfing, we offered 10, 10 different experiences, eight of those 10 were completely full, those are all put on by volunteers, Dr. Brian Greaves, local firecracker, Dr. Ben Slice, pediatric care physician, they volunteer their time for that. Awesome. Tara Kelleher has put on what she has called the Beachfront Swim Camp, which is at Smalley Park, since the bathroom's a beach, we have shower, and she has 50-some child age participants involved in all kinds of this stuff, water, we have waitlists. And, and then some of our other old ones that we've been around for a long time, T-ball, kickball, archery, those were all full, little kicker soccer was full too. Done, a lot of our managers have lots to share, but things just really, really roll in. Especially after last year. Thank you for your time.
I thought Matt was joking about 35-minute presentation. Couple of, just a couple of updates for the police department. First off, Officer Jody Johnson's announced her retirement first part of September. As such, she was one of our SROs. Today, in cooperation with the school district, we've named Officer Tyler Thornborough as our next SRO. Tyler's a 15-year veteran of the department and has a lot of experience and a innate ability to communicate and will be a great resource for the schools. Two other updates, some community engagement activities. Last year, due to all things COVID, we had to cancel a lot of our community engagement activities. The first one is National Night Out, August Day, you'll see some agenda items later on regarding that. Shawno Police Department, Shawno Fire Department, Shawno Sheriff's Office, Shawno Ambulance, Wisconsin State Patrol, and DNR in years past, and this year will be participating. We're actually adding two new agencies. The Bondwell Police Department has asked to participate with us as long, as well as the Monominee County Sheriff's Office. So the event is growing, which is really great because we are actually one all, one community. Good to see everybody. The other is, and I see Mr. Sidell here this week, Kona the Cop is coming back, which is, yeah, actually, the officers really enjoy that one, not just because it's ice cream, but because they, the officers really like engaging with the public in those, in those meaningful ways. It's a great way to meet people that we wouldn't normally meet in our normal activities in the past, so we're really excited about those. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
What is the date of that?
The Kona, uh, Kona the Cop? 18th, August 18th. No questions? Right, thank you.
And I had some positive comments about sidewalk, I've talked to one of the neighbors that lived, really pleased that we, project. HME project that should be starting later this month, that's Riddling Pin, Fort Riddling Pin Mill Street and some Matt Cemetery Streets. Also, major street reconstructions, Smalley Division, that got curb and gutter today, I don't know if they finished it yet, but they're working on that, all the utilities are in streets. And Circle and Division Street they'll be moving to, I think they're going to Circle first and Division Street. The other thing we got are crews are cleaning and repairing catch bases, might be seeing, you might be seeing them out there televising some of our sewers that we have, and they're also painting crosswalks, moving onto yellow curbs. Thursday, Friday this week, should be putting up the APV signs, so that's all I have. Questions for me?
Just want to make a comment on Lakashan, I know that there was a concerned citizen about truck traffic there and noise that was done. I had an opportunity to drive a large truck through there today, in fact, and there is no more, it's, I mean, it's not the banging, it was because of the, the separation of the road that was causing all of that.
And I did get some feedback on that from that gentleman mayor, I can share that with you, he, he was happy, just, just to hear that, that he figured also that, yeah, place that.
But it was really nice, yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions for me? Thank you.
All right, thank you Scott.
Okay, a lot shorter than Scott's, but, you know, so, the last half of them.
Allogee, people may be able to zoom in.
All right, so, we'll move on to correspondence. Kind of go.
I don't know, I don't know if they have any reports, but.
Please stand, take a bow.
Here, in with us. They've started on Tuesday, no, Monday, sorry, last week, Tuesday. So we've been catching them up, a lot of things to get up to speed, a lot of things that he's already up to speed on because he's been working with the Central Wisconsin Plan Commission for the last 20-plus years. And so he's actually been working with the city on our, our comprehensive plan update with the Plan Commission, so he's well-versed in the city, he lives just outside of the city, so now his commute's a lot shorter.
Okay, also, as you heard from talking about the National Night Out, we here at the city have proclamation about the National Night Out, and I like to read it for. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. It's entitled National Night Out, and whereas the annual National Night Out provides the unique opportunity for the city of Shawno to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime fighting efforts. And whereas the National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships, neighborhood camaraderie, to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live, and whereas citizens of Shawno come together and assist Shawno Police Department through joint community building efforts and support of the National Night Out 2021. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Shawno come together with the police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Bruce Milivitz, do hereby call upon all community members in the Shawno area to join the Shawno Police Department for the National Night Out on Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. And forethere, let it be resolved that I, Mayor Bruce Milivitz, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021 as National Night Out, City of Shawno. Yeah, is it at Memorial Park? In fact, yeah, we'll, we'll move on to that, that's probably something that possible. Free throw contest with Officer Shawna Kasich, could you make that a little more easy? Okay. Okay, um, thank you for that. Committee and commission reports. All right, so let's move on to the consent agenda, but first of all, within the consent agenda, if there's anything that we need to pull out and talk about separately or vote separately, let me know and we'll do that, but we're going to talk, in here, got approval of common council minutes, approval of application for temporary Class B beer picnic license, we're looking for an approval of road closure sidewalk modification request. First of all, the picnic licenses, that's for the veterans, Stable Veterans Fishing Tournament that's coming up 16th, 17th over at Huckleberry, and the road closer walk modification is going to be for National Night Out, August 3rd. That'll be from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, and then that event that you heard the, the citizen talking about earlier, Shawno Fairness Coalition March. Apparently it's going to, it's coming up Saturday, the 17th at 1:15. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, looking for a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to the monthly bills. Questions on?
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly bills and claims.
Second? Question? Favor? Or, excuse me, yes, roll call then.
Hi.
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 We'll move on to resolution ordinances. Be looking for motion for 7421, approved resolution authorizing the submittal of a community development block grant. I do also want to let you know that we're, time that we're changing where you're not reading. They're at the new format, okay? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, attorney discussion on resolution 7421. Okay, seeing none, whether to be a call vote?
Aye.
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 Resolution number 7521, approve resolution to commit matching funds for the community development block grant, a housing study and needs assessment.
Make that motion.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call? I'm sorry.
Eddie, is this just, so before I think you mentioned.
Yeah, so. Perfect, yeah, so basically, we're submitting a grant on behalf of the City of Shawno, Gresham, Tigertown, and Whittenburg for match funds for this, they're our partners in this housing study. And so what we would, the city would actually be on the hook for ultimately is, our portion is $8,000 for this housing study, the grant would cover 5,361, and then our local match requirement would be 2,600. Yeah.
So the match would be a grant, funding for it.
Yeah, so we, without the grant, we'd be on, on the hook for $8,000 worth of the study, the grant's going to reimburse us that $5,000.
All right, so.
Aye.
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 Resolution number 7621, approve the City of Shawno 2020 audit.
Second.
Second, is there a question? Greg is fully prepared to go page by page if you would like. However, I feel like the other Greg did a great job of summarizing.
So we'll look for a roll call.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolution 7621 passes. Resolution number 7721, approve lot combination for R.I.J.S. LLC properties located at 1,005 East Green Bay Street, Shawno.
So this is the Dairy Queen property, Mr. Sidell's business, that if you're looking at the map, it's page three or four on the attachment, that small triangular piece ending in 1710 used to buy the property just to the, to the east, that what, no, to the, basically on, it was a restaurant.
Flamingo.
Flamingo. Flamingo, yeah, it was previously owned by Flamingo's. He was able to acquire that now, which obviously helps him because that's pretty much where his drive-through area goes through anyway. So it's just piecing these two parcels.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Close? 7721. Resolution 7821, approve conditional use permit for Rainbow Car Wash. That was brought forward to the Plan Commission.
So the owner of Rainbow Car Wash is looking to further develop that piece of property. He wants to put some business condo units behind the car wash. One would be auto repair and then two other that he would make available to either rent or lease for other small businesses. Kind of an office space, but also have like garage space. It requires a conditional use because it's got multiple principal uses on the single parcel. And he's aware that any subsequent use that would come forward to fit in those spaces would also be, have to meet the requirement of the community mixed use time with that. So the reason it's, like I said, the reason before it's conditional use is because it's multiple, multiple, it's considered a group development, which is requiring conditional use.
Second? Second, any discussion? Favor?
Hi.
Close? Resolution 7921, approve the purchase of a rubber tire wheel loader for the Department of Public Works.
I assume.
7920. Second? You have a motion and a second? Question, you want to add Scott?
Well, just real quick, a lot of the things that Brandon was saying in that plaza, that was some of our concern while we put this out for bids early for next year's budget. And we were told that those prices could be up to 15, maybe 20% steel cost. And we did see great numbers, so. I think budgeted was 240,000 and numbers that came in at just under 203.
Thank you. So if there's any further discussion, we'll look for a roll call.
Hi.
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 Resolution number 8021, approve appointments to Wolf River Treatment Plant Commission and Police and Fire Commissions.
Is the reappointment. Is the reappointment of Ron Stuber to the Wolf Treatment Plant Commission and then Ron Bistel is being appointed to fire, fill the unexpired term of.
Second? Second? Shawano, favor?
Hi.
Close? Okay, ordinance number 1995, amend Chapter 10 zoning code, Article 2, Establishment of Zoning Districts, Section 10-22, map of standard zoning districts, 802, South Wheat, 5, RM10.
So this is kind of a unique situation that the Plan Commission encountered. There was a house at 802 Wheat Street that whether it was built as a multi-unit or was converted that way a long time ago, clearly is a multi-unit. The entire thing is separated, all the utilities are separate. But when we redid the zoning code back in 14, it was considered a single family. So even though it hasn't been operating as a single family all these years, it, it, it was zoned single family. So a person purchased it, wants to rehab it as a three unit, which it currently is, contacted us and said, hey, you know, I'm just a little worried about, you know, investing into this property. It's considered single family, I don't want to get in trouble later on. So we took it to the Plan Commission. And the Plan Commission, you know, typically it's very guarded against allowing single-family residences to be converted into multifamily residents, something actually in our comp plan we really want to avoid. But because this was a unique circumstance that it already is three units, it would make no financial or feasible sense to actually convert it back to a single family. It would be cost prohibitive and no. So basically the Plan Commission felt that in the end, allowing this property to be redone as a three family and done well was a better use of the space. It would have been had we noticed it was a three unit back when we rezoned, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so. Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Close? That's 1995. Ordinance number 1996, amend Chapter 10 zoning code, Article 2, Establishment of Zoning Districts, Section 10-22, map of standard zone districts, Alpine Shores property, RM20 to TR6.
So there's a smaller lot in the Alpine Shores area, it's depicted in that map on page four of six, it's probably the easiest way to see it. Currently was zoned MR20 because the property next to it was zoned MR20, which is 20 units per acre. Couple people purchased it, they want to do twin homes on it. For them to meet the setbacks to put a twin home on that, it had to be rezoned from MR20 to TR6. So again, that's going to become a duplex or a twin home unit, purchased unit. And so, but it needed a zone change to allow for that. Two, I believe it's two owned units are going to be on the property. One.
One building.
The one building.
One building, two.
Yeah, similar to. Like over on Spruce Court.
I got it now.
It's. For a. Ordinance. Motion and a second? Further discussion? Favor?
Hi.
Close? Okay. Um, all right, we've already been through 20. So. Have an extra. Making sure. Okay, let's move on to committee member comments or new business to be considered at a future meeting. Thing that I'd like to talk about. Done? On to entering into closed session.
Make that motion and we go into closed session.
Motion and a second?
Hi.
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 Okay, we've been to closed session. Good try. Good try.